You just get five dollars in a year.
All right, you can hit the record button. Start recording. Start your meeting. Ready? Okay, the meeting is now session. Motion to adjourn to immediately enter into a public hearing to motions to recess, to recess, uh, to return after a public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meaning to adjourn. Now we open the public hearing for establishing the percentage tax share of taxes to be paid by residents and non-residential property owners for fiscal year 2021 pursuant to the provisions of chapter 797 of the Act of 1979 as amended. That hearing is now open.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Reynolds. I'm with Regional Resource Group and I'm representing the assessors tonight. I see we also have Steve there. The purpose of this evening is, I've just go, has everybody got a copy of the booklet that I sent out, the document? Excellent. Okay. On the first page, after the, after the ti- the cover page, the introduction, prior to the mailing of the third quarter tax billings, the select board holds a public hearing to determine the percentage of the town's property tax levy to be borne by each major property class. This responsibility and procedures are described in chapter 40, chapter, section 56 of Mass. General Laws. There are many steps that go into setting the tax rate. Tonight, we are on steps four, five, and six, which is the hearing determining the shift options and the vote of the select board, followed by step seven, eight, and nine, hopefully over the next day or so, to get tax bills out in a timely fashion. I would imagine that everybody is, there's, there's a half page of terminology, but I imagine everybody's fairly well-versed. I can go through it if you like. Otherwise, I'll just keep soldiering on and get into the nitty-gritty of it. So first is this, if you go to the next page, there is a summary. All of these numbers can be found on the Department of Revenue's Gateway. And this basically summarizes how we come down to a tax rate and, and our recommendation. So the fiscal 2020 levy limit was 3,084.17. Under Prop 2 and 1/2, you can, you can increase that levy and that number is 74,064. We have new growth revenue, which is tax dollars, not value, for fiscal 21 of 23,381. We have also are excluding debt to pay bonds at of 84,705. That means that the fiscal year 2021 levy limit becomes 3,269,203. The levy ceiling, by contrast, is 4,409,592. And the levy to be raised based on the budget that was passed and all of the other financials in Gateway is 3,132,574, leaving an excess levy capacity of 136,629. The, right below that summary is evaluations by class before the tax shift. And what's really important to note here is that over 80% of the taxes burdened is borne by the residential class of properties, 81.582%. The result of that is that if we were to shift the tax rate, there would need to be a major shift to the burden of commercial, industrial, and personal property in order to even have a minor or very modest shift and advantage to the residences. Therefore, as we typically do in, in, in the town of Blandford, is that the assessors then recommend a single tax rate. Going through the next page, the summary of assessments, to come to the, to the valuation levels, we used a two-year sales, calendar sales, so calendar 2018 and 2019 for all classes except single-family properties. Single-family properties, there were enough sales that we were allowed to use one year, which is calendar 2019. The bottom of that page shows the results, which are, basically that's the LA4 that you'll find on Gateway, that shows the total valuation for this year. So as, as I mentioned, it would take a very large shift in the CNI in order to yield a minor residential reduction. As it looks on Gateway right now, and of course, this hasn't been a final approved, final approval of Department of Revenue yet, but it appears that the tax rate is staying even at 1776 per thousand for this year. As I said, it could be, it could change slightly based on Department of Revenue review, but that's probably the, where the rate's gonna, gonna land. So just year over year, the average single-family homes in Blandford this year increased about 2.3% in overall valuation. Vacant lands, we, we increased all vacant land or all land in town. So some of that 2.3 is in the land on, on the homes as well, because all, all of our land schedules went up about 4 and 1/2%. And that includes all, all in, commercial, industrial, residential vacant went up. Commercial property values increased modestly about by the same, just based on the underlying land values going up for this year. So if you look down, the average fiscal 20, single-family home was valued at just under 220,000. This year, it's closer to 225. Given this, the tax rate not changing, the average tax bill is gonna go up, and this is just average dead center, is gonna go up by about 84 bucks for this year. That's without any shift. So given that, the Board of Assessors recommends that the Board of Selectmen adopt a residential shift factor of one with a corresponding commercial, industrial, and personal property factor of one, which basically means no shift. And that is the recommendation of the Board. Is, are there any questions before, before I suggest a motion and a vote?
None here. Anyone? No, we're good. No questions.
Hey, Jeff.
Yes.
Did you wanna, I don't know, maybe add?
Oh, talk about the solar?
About solar, yeah.
Yeah, let's talk about the solar. So there are four solar prop, projects currently underway or, or, or generating electricity as it stands right now. Because of what a kind of nutty year it was this year, the two of the three, which I believe is Sincarfa, and I can't remember the name of the other one, that's Blandford Solar, maybe? Can't remember the name of the other two of the, one is under construction still, one is just about finished, and two are up and running. But this tax rate and growth numbers do not include those numbers. The time, by the time everything got sorted out, we were unable to get them into the tax rate and get them approved. So what we are going to do, what the plan is, is we're not getting, we're, we're not getting, giving up any income. What we're going to do is as soon as the tax rate is approved and tax bills go out, we are gonna send the pilots to the two that are up and running, which is a significant amount of money. We're gonna send them their pilot year one bills, so that that money comes in. We're then going to take and value that personal property in the appropriate manner, get it into what's called the revised and omitted and amended growth, so that we can pick up the growth, so it'll affect us, it'll affect the tax rate in a positive manner next year, and also raise this, raise the levy ceiling as we go. So we don't miss out on it, we're just pushing it off just a little bit on the advantages, well, the immediate advantage is, of course, bringing in additional monies to the town that aren't accounted for in, in the Gateway approvals right now. But we will see that, those two for next year. Also, the third is slated to go online for fiscal 22, and we will make sure that that gets valued and put in for next year as well. So next year's growth should be abnormally significant and, and do a nice job helping both the tax rate and our levy ceiling for next year. The fourth, I'm still not sure what's going on. I believe that that's just under, under negotiation and still, still trying to come to a pilot agreement on that one. So that's kind of where that stands. Unfortunately, we were unable to get them into the tax rate for this year, but it bodes well for next year.
So there's that one that they don't want to do a pilot agreement.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, the fourth that you're talking about?
Yep.
That's the one that is, that they don't wanna do a pilot.
Oh, great.
They're all, are online. That's the one where I was telling you to?
They just need to be billed, because they re-.
Okay. Well, then what we will do is as part of, I'll make a note of that, and as part of the revised and omitted, we will just value them at market level and, and send them a revised and omitted and treat them the same way.
That should be the, it would have a Blandford, North Blandford Road address.
Yep, I believe you're right on that one. Okay.
Well, that, that, we have asked the company at least two or three times to enter into a pilot agreement, and they have ignored it. So they don't wanna, and they just get stuck with whatever their appropriate tax bill is.
Well, then we, we will just, we will value, we value them the same way as if they were going into a pilot. We'll use the, we'll use the same, we, I believe, I'm not an expert at the solar part of things, we have, we have our solar experts for that. But I believe that they will use a similar methodology, but we will just put it on, put it into the personal property and, and send it out at a market rate, for sure, and, and adjust it annually at market rates. But we'll do that with the revised and omitted, and it'll go out the door for income this year as well.
We have three pilots, one pilot, and then we had a fifth, a disentrover, that should come forward, we just haven't got there yet.
Okay, okay, I think I was confusing that with the one based on the summary that I received the other day. But we will definitely make sure that those, so three will get revised and omitted, and one is slated currently, one is slated for, to, to come online next year. So that's what we'll set.
Jeff, Mary Conwell here. Could you please tell me again why they were omitted from this year's tax rate?
Sure, well, I think that the, I guess I, I will take the blame for it, as it were, because they really should have gone on. However, I was never a part of the, the solar valuation team. We did lose somebody early on in a system, and I thought that Harold had, had taken it over and was, and was making sure that they got in place. And unfortunately, I just think that it was a miscommunication that happened on our end.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions in the field? I think we can proceed to a motion.
Okay, if, if you, if you like, there is a motion on the last page of the booklet that you're welcome to read if, if, if you're in agreement with the single tax rate.
Sixth page, right?
Yep.
Okay. You want the recommendation? I'm gonna read it. Tell me if this is not what you intended.
Sure.
The motion would read as Board of Selectmen to adopt a residential shift factor of one with a corresponding shift factor of one, thereby maintaining the relative shares of overall tax burden borne by the residential property owners in past years.
Absolutely. Yes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. So that passes. Are we done with our hearing?
Wonderful, that is, that is the extent of the classification hearing. There is a, a form that I will forward to the clerk that needs to be filled out and uploaded to the LA5, but I'll take care of the remaining assessors pieces over the next day, so that we can get final approvals. And Josh, if there's anything that I note in the, in the submissions that have error messages or anything, I'll let you know, so they can get hammered out. Okay?
I don't think the select board, they don't have to sign, go in and sign this time around.
They don't, you, you don't have to sign anymore? That you used to have to sign off and, on a, on a piece of paper and we'd upload that. Now it's a clerk's affirmation, clerk certification of, of what we've done tonight. So they'll, they'll fill it out and sign it and, and upload that instead.
Okay. Tom, motion to close the hearing?
I am here.
Motion to close the hearing?
I move that we close this hearing.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The hearing is closed. Now we will, we will reopen into our general meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, next item up for bid is the minutes. We have to examine each of previous minutes from November 30th.
Okay, I would make a motion that we accept them as red, written.
Okay, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Note abstained from care, not present. Tom, where your signature? Okay, our next item is B, review and take action on appointment for a candidate, Mr. Nate Maynard, to the confirmation commission, or the conservation commission. Do we have our votes here for that?
Uh, Nate Maynard is actually online.
Nate's online with the glasses?
Yeah, online.
All right.
Thank you for welcoming me here.
All right, Nate, what brings you to our door, brother?
Hey, I just, a new resident here in Blandford. I just moved onto Chester Road, and I got a background in environmental science and a love of the outdoors. And Dick Gates gave me a call, and, and I'd heard through the grapevine that I had an interest in the Conservation Commission. And so he asked me to, if I'd be interested in joining him in the team. And I said I was really excited to, really excited to be here in Blandford. And as I mentioned, I, you know, my background is in environmental science and education, so looking to see how I can contribute some of my background and skills to the community.
So what do you do the other two hours a week that you won't be doing Conservation Commission?
I, I work for a nonprofit in Holyoke, viability. It's, I'm a program supervisor for a work readiness program. It's called PRIET. It's the pre-employment transition services. We work with high school students with disabilities, helping them develop work readiness skills, get internships, and actually work with Gateway High School. I've got a contact over there and would love to be able to figure out how we could get students to come out and get involved in the conservation mission with land ma- trail maintenance and educational pursuits. So yeah, my work is essentially overseen in educational program.
I'm good. Tom?
Yeah, I'm reading his resume here. I think he'd be a good addition.
Do you actually have a resume in your pocket? I gossip that probably.
Yeah, I don't think I submitted a resume, but Dick told me to write some credentials. So I, I work with students writing resumes and cover letters, and I, I think I, yeah, I felt like I was applying for a job, but.
Seconded.
Awesome. Here's a man that can help us open up space. All right. Okay, I'll entertain a motion, Tom.
Well, you could give me that back, so I could read it. Okay. I move we appoint Nathan Maynard to the position of Conservation Committee member. Effective immediately.
I second the motion. Is this, did someone leave the commission, or did we just have a vacancy? Okay, so appointment to the vacancy. All right. Welcome aboard.
Okay, you wanna use this for signatures?
Is that appointment certificate? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? I'm a aye.
Aye.
Aye. So welcome aboard, sir. And do we have to do a note to office for him as part of the board commission?
Yeah, I did saw it.
Yes, ma'am. Swear away. You're gonna get sworn in on public television.
All right, let's do it.
Let us know when you can see our clerk. There she is. All right.
Hi, Nathan. Please stand up.
Hello.
Or sit and raise your right hand. So we can see your hand on video. There you go.
And repeat after me, insert your name after aye. Aye?
Nate, Nathan Maynard?
Okay, they're sending me to the microphone. I, Nathan Maynard, do solemnly swear.
I, Nathan Maynard, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
That will faithfully and impartially discharge.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of Conservation Commission member.
Of Conservation Commission member.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations, you're sworn in.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, and I need a different statement.
My witness statement is written on there. Well, thanks. So we don't need to keep you. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you're welcome to bail as well.
All right, well, thank you for welcoming me aboard, and yeah, looking forward to collaborating with the, the rest of the Conservation Commission members.
Thanks for volunteering, it means a lot to us.
Thanks, thank you.
Yeah, excellent. Take care, everyone.
Okay, review and take action on 2021 alcohol beverage retail license renewals.
So there, of the three, only two submitted renewals. There's also in there, there's also in there, certificate of compliance by the prior chief for, for those two establishments was alcohol, country club and the country store.
Right, so the ski club did not renew liquor licenses?
Ski club did not renew. There is a form. I don't have my, it is a form that has the ski club name in it that failed to renew that will submit to the CC.
Okay, do we say failed or just chose not to? I don't think it's a failure, I think it's a choice, right?
I picture, yeah.
That's not how the form reads, it doesn't say.
Oh, okay. All right.
But yeah, so that's the only liquor license that.
Okay, so we got Mr. Modern and the Country Store?
There's also a memo there from the Treasury Department of Commerce, describing the tax basis of these violations. Or in this case, the country store isn't a prepayment plan and have them doing their payments on time, except for one month.
Sure.
Understandable, issue probably a lot. That's three, some challenges, I'm sure.
We extend the latitude to businesses just as we extend them to citizens, so.
But there's no, no, we, we're sorry, can't do that.
Just so you know, there's a typo.
But that's.
Memo says that's mofod, says they paid this much, which is twice what's up. No, that's a longer number. Okay, take action on these individually, of course, correct? Where do I sign? Do I have, I thought I have some tabs in it. Can you take that from? Tom, have you had a chance to look at materials?
I'm doing that now.
So the only thing that you'll sign is the, the one that has the personal business.
Yeah, all lines on it?
Yep. So right here, you.
Local licensing authority? Yeah? Okay.
And basically, the motion would be to move the classification to that.
So first one I have in front of me is the Blandford Country Club, so my motion is to renew for the Blandford Country Club. Tom?
I second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Yeah.
Does, does we sign this?
Yeah, here, you sign right here. Right below me. Bottom of the page.
I'll be darned.
And the second one is for the Blandford Country Store, motion to renew.
Okay, I move we grant a shit license to the Blandford Country Store for alcoholic beverages.
Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that needs your signature as well, Tom. How many did? I mean, if we just have to resign them, we have to resign them.
All right, this is all of the package, I believe. Yep. Yeah, there we go.
These are copies, too. Those are copies. I don't know what Joanne did, my original.
Okay, well, just need to call us back in to resign if you can. Or at least have something where we fixed our signature in an attempt to. In the reference book, or in here, the fact that it carries back. Tom, do you have the meeting notes that you signed?
I thought it passed me back to.
I've got a couple that say that in here. I just didn't have that for that. Okay, uh, moving on. Review and take action on a letter requesting that Eagle Club Road, a private road in town, be plowed and sanded during the upcoming winter season.
Make a motion that the highway department be directed to plow Eagle Club Road.
Uh, second, um, for discussion purpose, I just have a question, Tom, in history. Have we traditionally put down salt and sand on the private roads that we?
Yes, they petitioned the town for it, such as this letter, yes. There's Eagle Club Road and Maple Lane down.
Well, I know we plowed them, but do we put down material on it?
If it's icy and it's a danger, yes.
Okay, alright.
Because of fire and ambush.
Okay, Rosalind? Mary?
Just for your information, that's one about a bylaws.
Yes, yes, I'm, I was.
I guess if you.
I was seeking clarification be- between the town plowing the road to maintain it open and whether the town puts materials on the road.
I think the Mass General Law refers to the winter road maintenance. Is that right, Tom?
Yeah, so that's all. I just never seen it in that nothing before. Usually I see the request to plow.
Well, the thing is, both of those roads, if we get an ice storm and we gotta get a fire truck or an ambulance on them, they're gonna be pretty, pretty touchy, so.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Passed. Um, so I guess the action to that is to, uh, let, uh, the highway department know. And so I will put that as the TA action item. Okay, uh, item C, review and take action on contract with the PDPC for PTTS through their PDAP.
Did you know your alphabet's there pretty good, huh?
I just go with that. So, so that's the, I just help people listening, that's the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for Professional Town Planning Services through the Planning Board Assistance Program. Okay, what do we got?
I'm not even gonna try that.
You're not gonna try and read that one? Seconded for discussion, so where are we?
TA. So, yeah, the planning board have met with, um, Ken, Ken, you know, we've been appointed, uh, assistant, you know, senior to help us with this. We met with them, um, interviewed them, talked with them some more, asked more technical questions, being sure they knew, um, what he's doing. Uh, they reviewed the, the contracts. The board's on board with it. I said it's a council, the council approved it tomorrow. And, uh, looking at in front of you is between now, we're starting tomorrow, it's at two thirty.
It seems like I have half of it. Starts at paragraph nine and ends at paragraph sixteen. I'm missing paragraph one through eight. Just saying that. I got the cover sheet.
In front of you, um.
Maybe, maybe Tom has the rest.
Mine goes through to sixteen.
You got one through eight? Maybe you'll have to tear that paint down for me.
Yes, I do. Yep.
Let me check my packages.
This one is complete, I believe. I think where the confusion is, they've got eight point one, eight point two, eight point three. Such a matter.
Time shot mine doesn't get to eight point three.
Do you have Mary over there? You have all of it?
Yeah.
Here, you want this one or that?
I just need something that's.
So, it's up to eighty-eight hours.
I just need this part.
And, uh, the, yeah, planning board has a fair budget, a buck and ten grand, which is more, a little bit more than what they leave, however, um, they're gonna be doing, we've received some funds from the, uh, the Perron Lawn Project Board, uh, for the peer review.
Yep.
Um, so, you know, this time, this contract is gonna be paid through a combination of multiple resources, uh, funds out of that, like, um, they're, um, it's a limited, or peer review, or peer review process. Uh, so it can be that you're gonna have, still some leftover money that'll just fall into the general fund, but they have more than only need to maintain this contract to account for.
So, it's not really, so are we saying this comes with an outlay of tax force or that we've already paid for the services?
No, no, it's, it's, we've already paid, they were, in the contract, it's gonna be monthly payment based on, um, the hours, number of tasks, and that.
And where does that money come from?
So, the planning board has funds, nearly ten grand, I believe.
Okay, yep, yep, we set that aside for, yep, right there.
Now it's on. Uh, but, the Perron Lawn Conservation Project, yeah, the Asian Conservation Project.
Also push money today.
Similar to, not bad at, um, there's a whole separate American project that many go to, specifically to pay for peer reviews to be, to help with the project. Uh, so whatever he's working on peer review, it's gonna be paid on that topic money, on top of this. So it's just a matter of making sure that we're processing the logistics that we're mindful of, you know, the amount of hours he's putting into there, so we're.
Which part of the planning fund it comes from? Uh, we're making mindful which part of the planning accounts it comes from.
That's it.
Okay, alright. Any other questions? Any other thoughts we need to know? You made the motion, we seconded it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. What's our date today? Alright. Unfinished business. Do we have Jen available for COVID-19, or?
We have a written one here.
Um, what the hell's up? Here we go. Okay. Uh, so, I'm gonna remove my mask so I can make this better. Um, so basically, two paragraphs of updates, um, the rest is all the guidance. Um, so on Monday, November seventh, so that was about a month ago, the eastbound turnpike was shut down for biohazard cleanup due to a COVID-19 case. The eastbound turnpike is now open and clear for business. Uh, so hopefully that clears up any rumors or thoughts that people have of starting. Okay, December thirteenth, that was Sunday, so all communities will be going back to step one, phase three. Um, apparently that's proclamation of the government, so, uh, Blanford's numbers are up and we are in the red. We were out of the red for a very short period. Jen would like to impress upon people to do their part, we're a small community, so, uh, any kind of, uh, variations in our numbers keeps us in a red spot because it's just, we're small numbers against a small base, so. Please, folks, be aware of what we're doing and be safe and follow guidance if at all possible. Um, an update on logging activities on Huntington Road?
Uh, just one second.
Yes, ma'am, sir.
I have something to add.
Yep.
I talked with the fire chief today, and I thought that the fire personnel, first responders would be directed by the Board of Health. He seems to think we're gonna get our directions.
From the state.
State Fire Marshal for us to be inoculated. And our plan is to do half of the crew and then, at a later date, do the other half, so that if there's any reactions, we're not gonna have the whole crew tied up.
Yes, I've learned from my time in the military, never be first in line for a vaccine. Doesn't work out well. Okay, thanks for that, Tom. Um, so we have anything on, uh, Huntington Road?
Doug, the only update is, it's all taken care of. We, uh, uh, spoke with the, uh, the people that were logging there, and everyone's on screen, we can understand where things are.
Okay.
So, all of this has been solved.
Okay, library gutters. Mary?
We have, we have our three quotes in common view, the board trustees, we'd really like to see, you've been to five of the copper gutters.
Sorry, speak up, I couldn't hear you.
We'd like the copper gutters. They are, um, in the spirit of history with the building, and they are the least expensive of all of them.
Thought the copper gutters were coming in at almost twenty thousand dollars.
It went from seventeen to, we don't do copper to fifty-eight eighty. And this guy came highly recommended by another contractor.
So either for copper or even for aluminum, you know, it's, it's priceless.
This tech roofing service guy, he just smoke, he just smoke checked everybody, right?
Yeah, but I, I question, I don't see any kind of warranty here.
Oh, I asked him about that, and he did say there was warranty, and Chuck was gonna chat with him.
The transfer conditions are set forth on the following pages are part of the proposal. Is there something else? Are we missing part of the proposal? Okay, so, uh, Mary, as a library trustee, are you recommending the fifty-eight eighty bid?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, where do we get the money from? Daffel, okay, uh. Who's gonna, who's gonna PM the project? Who's gonna project manage in this, yes? Who's gonna, who's gonna watch their work and validate their quality? I mean, I don't expect Mary to get up on a ladder and see that they're putting in copper.
Is that something we can ask by word?
Okay.
You want to, you ask?
Sure.
Or our building inspector?
Well, he's gonna have to inspect the unit.
Right. So.
We've gotta make sure that, is the contractor gonna take out the permit for it?
So, how about we do this, Tom? How about a motion to, uh, award the guttering work to tech roofing service for the cost of fifty-eight eighty? And for, as Mary Crown told the customer, to advise tech roofing service to take out a no-cost, uh, building permit with the town, as it is a government building, um, prior to beginning work. That is my motion.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, Mary, there's some part of this that we need for, if we need to bring it back in and sign it, there's the second page, I think that might be the signature page, but.
Josh, is this just informational about the electrical inspector? We don't have to act on this, we already have. Oh, oh.
There we go. Alright.
Eric?
Yes, sir.
Got a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I had sent everybody on the board a request for your thoughts on this past year and ongoing, and Eric sent a very nice and thorough statement. I will, it is, I will send it to the rest of the board members.
Try to give you some quotes, you use them wherever you want.
You can speak to the board. Is that alright?
Sounds good to me, but it's not a writing.
Pretty scary deal right there.
I can write my name and ask you first, I go.
Okay.
And Nicole, um, had an article in the Association for Rural and Small Landowners' quarterly journal about her work supporting the.
I think the selectman should send her a letter, uh, commending her for her work.
She has done phenomenal.
Yeah, that's exceptional. Make a motion to that effect, that we send the librarian a letter telling her of our appreciation for the hard work she did to, you've gotta finish it, right?
Seconded.
She's running four brands this year.
But it's what she's doing to tie it with other libraries.
Right, it's the bigger picture.
It's really outstanding.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. TA, your chance to say it.
I think Mary got it.
Sure?
It's actually, I think something now. Yes, I can do it.
Okay, uh, new business, uh, all department expense report. Anything there we need to look at, Josh?
We're still good.
Yeah, I think we're doing exceptionally well.
I think we're still, uh, well within parameters of what we're supposed to be, right?
Yep.
Plus some.
Alright, uh, Putniko Farm LLC introduction, that you guys, I've been having to sit there back wall online, you're gonna rock you up sooner.
I think also we have on the line, uh, Nicholas.
Yes.
Yeah.
Hey Nicholas, you. Good evening, folks. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Yeah. Alright.
Uh, so the show is yours, that's all I have is introduction, so.
Alright.
You have my face mask and say that I'm Eric McVeigh, the board clerk acting as the chair tonight.
Tom Hackley, the funky member.
And Tom Fielding, and my partner Scott and Connor.
Okay.
And the Zoom is, um, Nick Oleski, or, um, Jerry, and he's.
I think we've met Nick before. Okay, anyway.
And also, uh, maybe my, perhaps somebody joining us, our consultant. We're both have a lot of experience in the cannabis industry, many years. Uh, so thank you for inviting us tonight and for giving us the opportunity to share with you our hopefully dreams for, uh, future here in Blanford. Um, and this opportunity to do a business part of town, which we now call Pearl, which is really great. Scott and I moved here about a year ago, a little over a year ago, and we're lucky enough to find a fantastic property. Scott and I moved to, over a year ago and we were lucky enough to find a fantastic property, a solid solve road. Fifty acres and the old barn, our farmhouse, and we just love it and it gives us an opportunity to do things in the life of you, like gardening. Let our three Labradors run through the fields, one of which, one of whom we've been breeding about a year when she's two years old. We had three Labradors and raised biggest laps on the property. So then we started thinking about what other things we want to do in our semi-retired, but it was busy. And what brought us to, that's what's interesting to the viewers tonight, is to try our head and growing dangerous really is a micro business. So the whole is, we have this old barn and there's a new section that was built in two thousand four. So in that new section, we would like to create a growing room. So it's only about a hundred and fifty square feet, so tiny operation probably.
A twelve by twelve, thirteen by thirteen, something like that?
Yeah, a third of this ground. So it would be our focus would be creating small batch cannabis, almost comparable to the farmer who just grows one varietal and some amazing heirloom tomato and specializes in that and it's all the others. So in that, we run the idea about some of our neighbors who's become friends, loving that little neighborhood out there. We brought you experience, I think, for your roses who, if you all like our farm, if you're getting the outfit, the construction of the.
One rose construction down on the.
Yeah.
They're our neighbors, so.
Yeah, yeah, Shane is across the plus.
And gentlemen, to, to, to give you some context to, to the size of, of what Pudding Hill Farm is, is presenting here. Marijuana micro business is a, is a co-located marijuana establishment that can either be a tier-one marijuana cultivator or a product manufacturer or both. And tier-one is the first marijuana cultivator classification size, which allows for a grow of up to five thousand square feet. So the fact, and that's a micro business. So the fact that these gentlemen are proposing a hundred and fifty square foot grow is sort of why if you, if you read the email that I sent the, the board as well as the town administrator, that is why we're considering this such a small-scale, micro, micro, micro business. And these gentlemen, Scott and Tom, are proposing this as a retirement project, basically, to create this boutique cannabis production. I would love to call it a production facility, but I don't even think we can call it that. I think what we're calling it is this backyard cannabis project, which will hopefully, they will hopefully create high-quality flower to sell in local dispensaries, local to your region. And it's going to be a very small operation, completely contained in, on, on their property, in their barn, with odor, all state-of-the-art odor technology, security system, et cetera. So even though micro business is considered a micro business and it's a small sort of one-off business, separate from the other types of marijuana establishments you might have heard about or read about. They, the, the operators of that business still have to comply with the same security rules, odor technology, waste management, water management, as would a hundred thousand square foot marijuana cultivator. So they all, they will be in full Cannabis Control Commission compliance with, as if they were a state-of-the-art hundred thousand square foot huge facility, but they'll be a hundred and fifty square foot facility. And as I said, completely fully located on their property, in their barn. And so I, I imagine that it will be of little to no bother to the town, if, if, if troublesome at all. But if anything, hopefully they will create a product that is of such high quality that it might even put you on the map for having, having that boutique. It's like, it would be like having a craft brewery in town where they create that perfect IPA that everybody likes and that, you know, you can only get if you're in that part of the world. You can't, you know, it's like some craft brewery from California where you can't really get it over here. But if you're in that one town or that region of California, you can get it. So that's what I imagine these gentlemen are envisioning. And we're here today to, to express all that to you and as well to answer any questions you might have. And ideally to get the ball rolling so that Mr. Garcia, I believe is the town administrator, and I can, can enter into host community negotiations and help these gentlemen make their project a reality and a legal reality. Because of course they have the right as Massachusetts residents to, to grow marijuana at home in any event. But my understanding is that to make this a reality, a legal reality, such that they are able to add to that by being able to sell in the boutique specialized market.
Is there going to be any holder?
Uh, no. So it's a, it's a sealed garden, the windows.
You're probably gonna have to take your mask down so I can either read your lips.
I'll, I'll try to, so it's a, it's a molecular filtration system with carbon filters. And it's, it, there's no exchange of air at all, so it mitigates any, any problems at all. It's a state-of-the-art that takes care of that.
So you're, you're basically, are you running under positive or negative pressure?
I'm sorry?
Are you running under positive or negative pressure?
Um, shoot, I don't know, that would be.
I'm sorry, I, I, I can't, I, can you speak up? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
I asked a question if they were running under positive or negative air pressure?
For the, the filtration system?
The filtration of the facility.
That's, that's actually not my area of expertise. We do have a, we do have a consultant. I do not know if he's on the line.
That's only how this guy, Mike Grafton, he couldn't be here, so I think he's, he's got a setup.
He's your engineer.
Yeah.
But nevertheless, I can't, I can't assure you that, I mean, while even, while without any air filtration, I highly doubt that any neighboring, any neighbors or butters could smell the marijuana at a hundred and fifty-foot grow. Given where these folks live, there will nevertheless be odor mitigation technology, the carbon filtration system that they're speaking of, which will prevent it from even being smelled on their property. So I, I don't think odor will be an issue whatsoever.
So Eric, what, sorry, what they want to do is, well, this is the intrigue of the agreement. They want to negotiate a host community, similar to the last process. They came here in front of you, introduced themselves, now we're just looking for a direction for this, or whether or not we're going to engage to the negotiations of this. We have a draft, draft template from KP Law, we'll just forward it and start there. And then hopefully by your next elect, we're going to be able to have something that came from you and is possible.
Have you got, have you got electricity enough over there?
And we're, all the, the generators are all set, we, we're just gonna have electricity. We just need to start on forty-six now, so we're counting.
All right.
Lower the photograph. And remember, as they go forward with the application process, they're going to have to host community.
Right, and they start to do the whole planning, planning process, planning, funding for it, so. Got no issues. Motion to move forward.
All right, Sharky.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Appreciate it, Doug.
Thank you. Thanks, guys, get after it. Live your dream, man. Good plan for, good luck for, live your dream. Where'd y'all come from?
Cape Cod.
Okay, the Cape, okay, cool.
And then before that, we've got some, we had a restaurant up there and a shop in the private area.
Okay, the only caution, you guys may be aware of it, is we may be doing boutique grow, but we only have license for one retail establishment in town, which we have not done. So if you're considering retail, we only have one license.
Yeah.
I, if you're, if you're looking for a retail applicant, I'd be happy to send some your way. I have, I've.
Fighting this, this, people think about business, we only, by the way we passed our zoning and bylaws, we can only have so many retail establishments in, in relationship to how many alcohol sales establishments we have. So that equals one, because we only have two alcohol establishments, so. Okay, well, thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight.
One, one, one last thing, one last thing, gentlemen, if I may, just, just to be clear. So the vote was to move forward with the process and from there I can engage with your town council on the, the host community agreement? Is that what I understand the next step to be?
Well, so yeah, we sent votes in before, maybe we will, there are a motion, votes to proceed forward, negotiating the host community agreement.
All right, it's the next, it's the next step, and I would say yes.
Okay, and, and who is your town council?
Mark. Mark Rich from KP Law.
I know KP Law well. I, I haven't had the pleasure with Mr. Rich, but I, I, I sure will shortly. Because I've prepared a draft host community agreement.
For videos, that happens on occasion.
And, and actually, I don't even think, I mean, judging from experience the last time around, I don't even think you'll have to talk about it at all. You just send the draft that he's, that we have, and then respond to the terms, add, take out, whatever. And then we just kind of facilitate that forward that way.
Okay, all right, sounds good. I look forward to it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
This will be you all.
Take care.
Okay, is there any more new business, Mr. TA?
I don't have any. I've been wanting to let you guys know, I've been working with the town area, it's a common thing. Having that conversation about moving out.
Yeah.
The crack of trees. So we put it, I stopped it once again. It looks like. We can't remove any of the trees down. Let's go get the most important town here.
Why? Because it's a.
Because it's town commons.
It is town commons. Really?
There's law, there's.
We can't, we can't, we can't keep town commons clean?
You keep it clean, you just can't cut the shrubs down.
Hey Matt, I was just, had you explained to the board this last time we met? We were talking about removing those shrubs from the veterans park. And then I couldn't uphold because we can't really, we have a lot of the vote.
Alter.
Can't cut a tree.
Mary, is that gonna go to?
Unless that tree poses a threat or is dead, correct?
No, it just, you can't do it.
Can't cut a tree? The tree ward can cut a tree, right? He puts a ribbon on, holds it here, cuts a tree.
He can't go in there and cut a tree, can we?
They were very brief in the seventeen hundreds.
What about shrubs?
I don't think they're considered shrubs. The only shrubs is the undergrowth going up the hill towards the.
Can we burn them? If we can't cut them, can we burn them?
But the trees.
Or do we need a witch to tie to them?
The green that's between, the green that's in between the monuments are those trees?
Huh?
They're big enough to be trees.
Those are trees. I don't think they're shrubs. I think they're.
Is there, is there something we can do through town meetings to alter that?
Wouldn't have to be a special town meeting or an all-town meeting.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to.
If, if it's determined that these bushes need to come down or to be moved in place, I would think.
Let's just cut Dougie loose on trimmer. That'll get them. Let's just let Doug trim the bushes.
Well, the only.
Trim them like he does.
I'm not seeing the humor in this because what happens if we do take them down?
They're gone.
That's not my question.
Don't come back to the haunch.
There's a lot of things trying to do that, but I'm just trying to figure out if we just went ahead and did this, what are the repercussions?
Repercussion is someone can come back and say, you took out four shrubbery's and you need to replace them.
Well, the plan is to do that.
Their plan is absolutely to do that.
I, I think, I think it wouldn't hurt to ask the town, say, look, this is what we want to do. These shrubs are disturbing monuments, they're, they're tipping, they need to not be replaced.
All right, now, if we, we have a historical permission, right?
It's not a historical permission, no, it'd be.
We have some, so we can put out the agenda on the warrant, because I'm reading.
So there is a point, yeah. We have a special town meeting?
We've covered.
We'll look at that, select them, worry.
Okay, just a warning.
Yeah.
So in other words, if, if we go at this step by step, we're going to be all right. If we just go bowling in there, we're not going to be all right.
There are enough people still in town who are aware of this.
That was my point.
Aware of what?
The law.
The historical law.
The bylaw, town commons.
Okay. So does our warrant need to change the bylaw?
Town commons, town commons are a serious.
It's one of the bylaws. It's one of the bylaws.
What is it?
It was by both, it was, it was by both the town committee, town meeting in seventeen forty.
To establish the commons?
Something, uh, no, that was seventeen forty-one.
Okay.
So ten acres of plot, and it originally included the middle cemetery. And that subsequently, in the round, turns the century, the turn, went to, when we were considered the town cemetery commissioners. And they take care of that because what we now think of as town commons is not ten acres.
Right, it's a little thicker.
Yeah, they, the, the town did, however, give permission to remove undergrowth. Going from the schoolhouse to the meeting house, which is the historical society, up to your, your first driveway.
Where that stone monument, that's your old meeting house, so, yeah.
It just gives, like, permission to clean out the undergrowth there under the ponds and to maintain a walkway.
Yeah.
Are you have filed that? So I did, I'll be just sort of make sure of getting to it and.
So, not that I, so does this warrant, does this warrant us updating our parameters for use of town commons moving forward? In it all, town meeting?
Yeah, I, I believe it is. They want to make the Veterans Park on the town commons.
We changed the name of that area at my folks' suggestion or motion several years ago. We wanted to change it totally to Veterans Park.
Yeah, do that.
And we didn't do that. And I got up there with some of the woods broken, ready to go for an hour in filibuster. And David Hobson asked me if I like to make an amendment, and I said, yes, we can call it Veterans Park at town.
There you go.
And that's what it's called.
So what's gonna happen is it's gonna be improved, which I don't think there's anything in the rules and regulations that says it can't be improved. Those two tall, well, they used to be shrubs. They definitely need to come out and be replaced with a, a low-grown shrub. So.
Yeah.
And the other thing we've got to be cognizant of is sooner or later, the state's gonna say, out there where North Plantford Road joins Route twenty-three, you're gonna have to cut that back so that people coming out can make a right turn and stop so they can see.
Yeah, you gotta pull that pullback and the stop sign and.
Yep.
Round it out.
So we don't, you know, we don't want to get too crazy out there.
On the pointy slice of the pond.
I wonder, I wonder if there are historical limitations to.
Well, I think public safety might supersede that, I'm not certain. Because that's happening all over the place, intersections like that. They're, they're cutting them back and so that the traffic coming out comes out to a right angle.
Or that even a truck that wants to turn left and come down that road and turn left and come down that road.
So there's gonna be a lot to it besides putting a shovel under.
We have enough room. We have enough room. Uh, I'm just thinking about that, uh... So we have the cemetery and the stone wall, and there's that grassy area between the cemetery, stone wall, and Route twenty-three, is that the town's or is that the...
That's state, part of the, right away.
So the state actually have enough room in there that they can make that rotary.
No, we don't want our rotary.
I was just thinking that.
They do, they have enough room that they can turn that into a rotary, they have, they made a little portion of that, that Y right there in front of our historical building, but I mean, you know, they can make that a little bit bigger.
That's just what we need, your older...
That would certainly slow down traffic in town, too.
I think, I think making a wider intersection with a nice new stop sign would be a great thing.
Oh, it might, but I, you know, a roundabout would solve that whole...
Well, the only problem there is you can't see what's coming at you from the other way.
All right, um, that said, I'm a fan of roundup, okay, um, here you go, journey.
Where's Karen?
I don't know, at home, with the kiddos?
Santa Claus is virtual business. The library.
How you gonna do that?
Hey, Josh?
Yeah, we're still here.
Yeah, can you get, ask Santa Claus to get you your own microphone, 'cause when you talk, we can hardly hear you.
Yeah, I know. I'll ask him.
Okay, while I got you guys all on the phone, may all of you have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Years, you, your family, and friends.
Thanks, Bob.
Merry Christmas to you, too.
Take care, Brian. You know how to shut this thing off?